We have a public hearing that we need to take care of. First, this is a public hearing for ordinance number 0414, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the City of Waupeka Building Code. I do call this meeting to order, or hearing to order at 5:58 PM. We'll ask Sandy to take a roll call for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett. Deb Vensky. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Brennan, could you just explain to us what the purpose of this hearing is for?
In essence, this hearing this evening is for really just administrative changes within Chapter 14. The state of Wisconsin earlier this year passed an ordinance or a law that really was more targeted for municipalities or communities that have downtown fire districts. If the city were to have stricter requirements, the state was requiring that any municipality that has a stricter ordinance to get pretty much a waiver from the state code. When we reviewed our ordinances, we identified that our requirements were not stricter than the state. The state, for many years, had a different building code until they adopted the ID, or IBC, International Building Code. When we reviewed all the information in our Chapter 42A, identified that there's a couple administrative changes that we had to change over. So what you see in your packet this evening, in red, are those changes, and they're just administrative changes. It aligns us with the state code.
Okay, and you can see that ordinance as it's reading right now on page 284 of your packet, council members. At this time, then, we would take testimony in favor of changing the ordinance. If there's anybody in the audience, or council, or staff that would like to speak in favor of the subject, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? If not, we'll take testimony in opposition. Do we have anybody that would have testimony in opposition to changing ordinance number Hearing done, I declare this hearing closed at 6:00 PM. Let's move on right away, then, to the actual city council meeting. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's regular scheduled city council meeting. It is Tuesday, June 17, 2014, at 6:00 PM. I do call this meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. If we give it to everybody who rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And again, Sandy, would you take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett. Deb Vensky.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. The consent agenda, you have a number of items on the consent agenda. I think Sandy has a couple more that she put on your desk for tonight.
Under number six consent agenda, letter G, number one, the Parks and Recreation Board minutes of a regular meeting on June 12, 2014, were distributed. Under number six consent agenda, letter G, number five, city plan commission minutes of a regular meeting on June 11 were distributed. Under number six consent agenda, letter A, number seven, the city treasurer's recruitment selection timetable, our timeline, was distributed. And that's it.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, where we would vote on those with a separate motion? Or if not, if you're satisfied with the consent agenda, then we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda with those couple additions. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, then the regular agenda, we have one addition there.
Under number nine, new business, letter I, additional information was distributed regarding the city insurance renewal. And that's it.
Okay, so, under number nine on your agenda, make sure we have that to our items that we'll be dealing with tonight. Anybody have anything there with the regular agenda? Otherwise, again, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We have public input. This is a time where we set aside for the public to come and speak to us on non-agenda items. See if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Anybody that'd like to speak to us on non-agenda items? All right, we'll move on, then, to department announcements and reports, and we're going to start with semi-retired Gene Peterson here.
Well, you know, everything's fine, the numbers are good, there's nothing glaring that has to be reported.
Thanks, Gene. Let's move on to the library, then. Peg.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. Well, we're very busy at the library. We have programs for adults, teens, and children, and right now, we have 371 kids signed up, 90 teens, and 105 adults, which is kind of a record all-time high for us. And so I have flyers for all of our aldermen to take home with you for teens, children, and adults, and I have those later after the meeting. We are still embarking on our planning process for the next five years. It's been stalled somewhat because of not having access to help first focus groups, but we'll be getting back on track this summer. Our mural and tree have been installed in the library, and you'll have to come in and take a look, it's really phenomenal. And we are having a makerspace on lawn some Saturdays during the summer, so we hope you'll join us. It creates a real excitement, I know that. It's really wonderful for our downtown to look so vital on Saturdays, when you go down and you see the farmer's market and stuff going on at the library, and the businesses are busy. It's really good for the community. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
And, Peg, any questions, comments for the library? Economic development, Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Just an update, I appreciate, again, the city council taking the time out of their schedules to attend five additional meetings, but last week, I presented the draft strategic plan to the city council for consideration. Received a couple comments during that meeting, have sent it back out to my team just for review, and we'll be bringing that forward later in July. Also, Dave Teal and I have made a presentation to the King and Inbetween Organization last week, Thursday. Dave and I are currently working on the Waupeka County Tourism Project together and trying to get some businesses within Waupeka, signed up for that. At that meeting, I also had the opportunity to present the draft strategic plan. That organization, that group, is definitely interested in the direction that the city is moving forward with. With the strategic plan starting to wrap down here a little bit, we'll be ramping up at the Plan Commission for the zoning code with the Central Wisconsin, so, starting in July, we're going to have a presentation to start working on that. The Main Street Visioning Committee is still working, a little hiatus at the moment, but looking to have a meeting in July. Still collecting some of the homework assignments that we had issued about a month ago, and collecting that data for the next meeting. South Park is about 90% done. We are targeting June 2 at the donor party. Aaron's Playground is definitely going...
Sorry, July 2.
Sorry, July 2. Apologize for the date. The playground is definitely moving along well, should be completed by the end of this week. The area will be closed off for Strawberry Fest this weekend, and the Hutchinson House, we're just not knowing exactly when the playground is going to be done, and some continued construction work out there. The parking lot will be closed until the following week. The building is, I would say, about 95 to 97% done right now, just waiting for the architect to go through and do their final inspections. The remaining concrete work will be starting up tomorrow. The contractor's been out there the last couple days leveling off the rest of the black dirt and the landscaping, so that will be progressing and finished off by the end of this week. Masher Gardeners will be starting next week on the landscaping around the building, the back patio area, and the flagpole area. And on the development side, Cubic Fabrication has submitted plans for their 36,000 square foot addition. Work has begun for their grading out there at the moment and finishing up some engineering work. Plans have been submitted for a subway to build a standalone building along Fulton Street, so that would be reviewed at the July Plan Commission. And I met with the owner of the former craft facility that's on Fulton Street last week Friday about his plans moving forward, hoping to start operations, I would say, late this year or early 2015.
Awesome. Thanks, Brennan.
Yep.
Any questions, comments for Brennan? Aaron, you want to wake up John? John's on vacation this week. Aaron Johnson, Parks and Rec.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Brennan, for reporting on South Park. The only thing I want to add to what Brennan had to say is irrigation is the only other thing that will be going in next week. That'll be done by the donor party on July 2 as well. I do want to report on, Bob Rundle and Steve Scharr came in last week to our department, did an internal audit, kind of just looked at processes and how everything is handled within our department. They spent all day Thursday doing that, and these two gentlemen are, Bob Rundle was the director of recreation in the city of Fond du Lac, and Steve Scharr was in Sheboygan and West Bend, both retired, both heavily involved in WPR, which is their state association, and a part of that foundation. So that is all going to get integrated into our planning process, which we plan on having our retreat with our park board and our staff in August to finalize that. Our tournaments are in full swing. Girls had a, a girls softball association, had a 12-team tournament last weekend in May. Boys had a 20-team tournament in the beginning of June, June 6, 7. The next big boys' tournament is this weekend with a 28-team tournament in town at Swan Park, and then we'll move on to our city tournament in the beginning of July after the 4th of July. Our programs, T-ball, swimming, playground program, all started up this Monday. The only large, large program that we have yet to start is our soccer program, which is our second-largest program. It's about 300, we have 341 kids signed up this year, which is up from last year. I will get into the roof later here on the agenda. Couple other things I wanted to report on, township meetings. The only township we have yet to meet with that participates in our agreement is Dayton. That date is set for Monday, June 23. Let's see, new programs that Andrew is working on, we do have the outdoor craft class, Green Guardian Chess, and Learn to Dance, those are the four new programs getting rolled out this summer. Good attendance so far in all of them, over 20 for outdoor craft class, which started today. Chess has 21. Learn to Dance is currently at 14. The Green Guardian, we are still trying to recruit people for that, so things are going well there. This past weekend, I'm sure you guys saw in the paper, the Lakes Association, friends of Meere and Shadow Lake, we've been working with them, and they do a fantastic job at monitoring basically the health of Shadow and Meere Lake, and they identified Eurasian Water Mill foil, which I guess I found out was a problem a few years back. They used a chemical to spray that. The thing with the chemical is, is that it ends up killing every other weed that's native in that area. So we went out this last weekend with two divers from the fire department here in Waupeka, certified divers, they pulled the two colonies that were identified. We've since went back and looked, and we cannot identify anymore at this point, but obviously, we will keep an eye on that. Good news today is that we spoke with the school district, and they're allowing us to use their tennis courts for pickleball, which will be able to be used within the next couple weeks here, whenever we get time to go and stripe those. So that's all I have for now, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks.
Comments, questions? All right, Chief Cook.
Thanks, Mayor. My regular month report is in the packet. We didn't have too much on the agenda for the PFC meeting. You can see financially, at 41% of the fiscal year, we're at about 37 and 1/2, and we started discussions about our 2015 budget. Other than that, the rest is informational.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Again, any questions or comments? All right, Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. Like the chief, my report is in the packet. I did want to reference the one item under personnel where we're in the process of filling Gene's position. I wanted to share with you at this point a timeline, and this was one of the items that was distributed. You know, my plan is to bring forward the job description and a budget and a timeline, this, again, for your approval. Just a couple highlights, you know, the position is sort of functioned as department head position, so that would continue. My recommendation is going to include that. Because it's department head, then, the mayor would appoint, and you, as a council, would confirm. And when we do department head recruitments, I leave it to the mayor to reach out to one or two of you to participate, if you want, to be in the process, so you can be involved at some level, maybe the interviewing. The job description will change. It's going to have a different education requirement. Right now, it doesn't require a four-year degree. Also, there would be some supervision involved in it. So without going into a lot more details, the job description will be different. You can see, we've got a lot of places identified to distribute the job announcement. And then, if all goes according to plan, we would be bringing the selection or the recommended individual to the council for your approval or consideration on September You know, I built some time in for transition, not knowing, obviously, where this candidate's from, built in about a month's time. We also have built some time in, three weeks, up to three weeks potentially, for this person to work with Gene, and for Gene to, you know, help bring them along in terms of our financial systems and stuff. So I think it's a workable timeline. The only kicker here is if we don't get a candidate that we can bring forward, that we're comfortable with, but I think it's a very desirable position. I believe we will get some local candidates likely, and I think we'll get some outside candidates. If you have any questions on the timeline? Mayor? That's really all I wanted to highlight in my report. Thank you.
Henry did talk about the timeline, and a little bit about the budget, too, but let's make sure that we all understand that with Gene's pending retirement and the overlapping of the job for a few weeks there, this is going to have budget implications, and hopefully we'll have a number for you at the July 2 meeting to give you an idea of what we feel the cost is going to be on the 2014 budget for that.
Mayor, if I might add, if you remember, council did approve a budget that had $20,000 up under your line item that was sort of related to personnel and human resource stuff. So I feel like this would be totally appropriate expense when we get it together to charge there, but again, it's up to you to decide that. But I think we will have budget implications, but hopefully, we've got some funds available to meet it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to unfinished business. We have, this is a holdover from one of our main meetings here. This is the review of the city code of ethic ordinance, and this is on page 198 through 212 of your packet. John Hart, you've looked it over, do you have any recommendations?
There's a couple of, well, there's one item for sure that needs to be addressed. This, in several places in here, it does refer to an ethics committee that is formed in the event there is a problem, and they act on any complaints, et cetera. And the ethics committee is the judiciary committee, which we don't have anymore, so there's going to have to be a little bit of housekeeping in that regard, to change the language and get that up to snuff, and then you're going to have to make a decision as to what the ethics committee is and who it's going to be. Is it going to be the committee of the whole? Is it going to be the council? Is it going to be, or set up a special committee? But that would be one thing that you'd have to act on. Otherwise, this is pretty much in line with the state statutes. There's a couple of things in here that, I don't know where they came from necessarily, which has to do with reporting gifts on an annual basis by the first of January of each year, and whether that should be on a more timely basis, that would be up to the council. But otherwise, this is pretty much in line with what the state statute code of ethics reflects, and I don't know that it's any more restrictive necessarily. It's pretty clearly straightforward as far as the state statutes are concerned.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Any other comments or suggestions from council or staff on this?
John, when we had a training a couple years ago, we had that fellow, I can't think of his name now, come up, and he gave the training, and he thought, I'm not sure that the, do we include department heads and administrator in here? This was mainly for, I think, the elected bodies?
This is for all public officials and employees.
So that's real clear, because I thought he may mention that.
Everybody is governed by this, if they're an employee of the city, whether they're elected or appointed, or just, I think, any employee comes under this thing. Interestingly enough, with this code of ethics, I don't recall ever having a problem with ethics. On occasion, I have been requested to give an opinion as to whether there is an ethical problem, but I don't believe there ever has been one, or any conflicts of interest or anything else that anybody's ever run into. Or if they could foresee that there was going to be a conflict, it was avoided and taken care of, so we never did have any ethics problems. Thank God.
Exactly. Anybody else have any comments? You do have in there the state code of ethics, too, that hopefully, everybody had a chance to read it, too, and do some comparisons there. So I guess what we're hearing from city attorney John Hart is, is that it looks like we have one item for sure that we need to clean up, that it directs the ethics board as the judiciary committee, which we no longer have. What's the council's preference there in changing that?
Well, judiciary was five members, right? Why don't you pick one from every district?
We could do committee of the whole, too. It keeps it simple, and there's no selection process, and it is 10 people, it might complicate things a little bit. And the good thing about it is that if someone on the ethics committee, if there's only five, is the person who has the problem, then all of a sudden, you have a smaller number. With the committee of the whole, you have an individual that the committee of the whole has to decide on, you're not going to knock yourself out with too few members or something. So it might be better to have a bigger committee, committee of the whole, as opposed to a small committee, though it would have been the same problem with the judiciary committee, but...
True. Well, there was a provision for that, though, and the mayor can appoint an alternate.
Oh, yeah. Right, absolutely. Right.
What's your preference there? I mean, we had two suggestions here. I think either one is fine.
I like Debbie's idea, and that way, if there is a particular alderman who hasn't, there's a complaint against, then that person cannot be selected. Otherwise, committee of the whole, then they would be obviously included.
So if I understand what you're saying, and what Debbie said, then, if we go along with this, this ethics board would not be, you would not name the members of that board until you actually needed them? Is that what your thoughts are?
That would make sense.
Or would you name them each April of the reorganization meeting?
I don't know. I just thought it was a fair way to do it, just pick one from every district.
What's the next step, John, after, I mean, if the...
Well, this is a pretty easy amendment, you can just amend this ordinance, since some ordinance has been adopted, I don't know, it looks like back in 1990, and we can make these changes pretty easy just by having an amendment, and if they can come up with some suggestion as to how that ethics committee is going to be formed, whether it's going to be determined on a case-to-case basis, or whether there's going to be a selection process every year at the organizational meeting, and you appoint X number of people to the ethics committee. Hard to say, whatever you want to do.
Okay. Well, let's do it this way, unless you have some more you want to add to either one of those ideas, or if you have a third idea, let's just start with a show of hands here, instead of making a motion and second. Can we do that to start with here? So if you like the idea of one member from each of the aldermatic districts, older people, raise your hand. So we have three, and I'm assuming, all right, let's go, if you like the idea of committee of the whole, which would be all the members of council, then, raise your hand for that. Okay, so the record shows that it was six to three, with one absent, and to formally do this, then, we would need a motion to have this changed?
I would move that we amend the code of ethics with regards to the ethics committee to include committee of the whole.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Peterson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. The one other item that I...
Now, what I'll do is, I'll draft an amendment to this and bring it back for reconsideration, not reconsideration, but for passage at the next meeting, or the first July meeting.
This is actually an ordinance.
It is, and so I would have an amendment to the ordinance to reflect not only that, but the other references to the ethics committee that if they need to be changed at all, would come back, but I'll redraft it. There may be a couple other things in here that I thought of that can be discussed at that time also, but I'll come back with just those changes, and we can act on it. Or it'd be a first reading and then a second reading, by the end of July, you'd have the amendments all completed.
Okay. The one item you talked about with the gifts and so on?
Right.
I mean, I like that idea where you would, instead of doing it on an annual basis, where you could forget, you know, if we would do it on a more frequent basis, like...
Quarterly, I would suggest.
Quarterly, or, yeah.
Yeah, and it just says that you're supposed to do it by January of the next year after the gift is received, while, you know, it probably would make sense to do it more regularly.
Yeah. Are we okay with quarterly, everybody? So if you want to put that in there, too, since we have to vote on it again later on. Anything else? You go to ordinance, it's been in place for this many years. All right? Thanks, John, for your work on this.
So should we pull these things off the desk, then?
When we get the new ordinance, we can do that, yeah, absolutely. When we get the new ordinance, we can do that. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, let's move on to new business, then. This is license report number 1229. This is a request for a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a Class C wine license for Cronies of Wapaka LLC. And I know that they are in the audience tonight. I entered your office, took this application. Is there anything that we need to know? I mean, history tells us that Cronies, prior owners of Cronies actually had this same license, and they did not renew it, the prior owners. And now, I'm assuming the owners have felt that this would help their business, so, not to put words in their mouth, but. So again, this would have to be, go, I mean, if we approve this license, then of course, the chief would have to do his, his background check, as well as John Lust would have to go through, and county sanitation person, all of those things would have to be done as any other license permit. Is there anything you guys wanted to ask?
I'm Diane.
Can you just stand by the microphone for us, since we're on, just to make you a little bit more nervous?
But yeah. Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name is Diane Weisbruck, and I just have discovered in the last two years that I've owned Cronies, that it's been brought to my attention, mostly during the summer, during tourism. A lot of people on vacation have requested to have a beer with their lunch, or have a glass of wine with their lunch, and on occasion, when I've said I don't carry that, they leave and go somewhere else. So I just felt that, you know, give the public what they want.
Yeah, I agree. It's five o'clock somewhere.
Exactly.
All right, anything else? All right, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Fenske, that we approve the license report number 1229, giving a Class B fermented malt beverage license and a Class C wine license to Cronies of Wapaka LLC. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good luck. License report number 1231, this is a Class B intoxicating liquor license, and Class B fermented malt beverage license, and Class A beer and intoxicating liquor license, which is on page 217 through 221 of your packet, if you're following along here. So this just cleans up the ones that we did not take care of at a couple of prior meetings. We have the Clubhouse Restaurant, Weasels, and then also Club 22 on there.
I've got a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Looking at Mentos Club 22, the legal description, number five, and I'm just wondering, it gives it as a horseshoe pit room. Is that outside, and is that permitted? Is that, you have outside areas?
Well, they did.
Is that outs, I don't know. It says horseshoe pit room. Can't imagine you're throwing horseshoes inside.
Well, it is outside, yeah. I mean, and it's, it's in their side yard, which would be on the east side of the property. And this is no different, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the same application as they've had in the years past.
Yeah, I just.
It is not a room. It's, it's.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. It's an outside request. I do think, as long as you're saying that, too, the address is incorrect. I mean, that's not Highway 22 and 54 anymore. I don't know if they kept the same number, 1822 Royalton Street, but we should, clerk's office should check that to make sure it's proper. Obviously, 22 and 54 don't go past there anymore. Are you okay, Eric?
Yeah, if the chief is good with that, I'm good with that. I'm just asking.
Yeah. Okay, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Mayo, that we approve the license report number 1231. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We have a license report number 1233. This is a special Class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages for the Knights of Columbus, July 4th chicken barbecue. And that's on your pages 229, 22, through, 222 through 229, which is, Henry has a memo in there also, but it's pretty inclusive on where they're going to be set up at South Park, and how they're going to set up their fencing for the selling of the, of the malt beverages, and so forth. I don't know if you have any comments or questions on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of this license report number 1233 for the Knights of Columbus, July 4th chicken barbecue. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have a license report number 1234. This is an application for a special Class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverages for the Wapaka VFW Post 1037, and this is for a wedding reception at their property on July 19th, 2014. Any discussion on this, or?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayo, second by Lockwood, that we approve of license report number 1234. Any discussion? The only comment, I don't know that it's a question, or, why don't they get a, a year-round license for the VFW?
Because they have to license bartender. Right?
This is cheaper, or what? This is cheaper to do it this way, and you don't, you wouldn't use it very much, I'm assuming. Is that what?
Really, because we're never open for the public, so.
Oh, okay. All right, good answer. Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good luck. On another license report, we have a license report number 1230. This is a arcade amusement device license. Again, it's on page 235. And again, this is just cleanup, too. I see there's a couple more on here. There's the Clubhouse, the Pack of Ale House, Club 22, Pick 'n Save, Rich's Sitco, and Cronies. What does the Pick 'n Save have?
That is the grabby machine that I always lose at when I go through.
Oh, okay. I wasn't thinking of that kind of machine. Okay.
It's over down aisle three.
Can't resist.
Sorry, I. Okay, again, we would need a motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion by Fenske, second by Pritchatsky, or Kealan. Kealan, to approve license report number 1230. This is a arcade amusement device license. All in favor, signify by, discussion?
Now, the gambling devices, that's the, those are the ones that are, what, not prosecuted? If there's five or less, is that how that works? I guess my question is, I mean.
They're out of the control of the local police.
Out of the control of the local police. So we are, are we approving gambling machines by approving these licenses?
You'll notice on there that some of those places, they put zero devices. They don't even have a device. But if they would in the future, they would have the license permit available to put something in. So it doesn't have anything to do with what device is there. It's just that they need to have amusement device license. If they're going to have anything there.
I'm looking at the two that have five gambling machines.
Well, I think, go ahead.
Doesn't make any difference.
No, although, although they do pay more.
Right, there's a fee for them.
There's an additional fee for gaming machines versus the claw, or whatever. That machine, you lose money in it. But, yeah.
That's the difference between a device and a gambling, right? Device is fun pickup thing, or whatever, and.
Well, I think the.
There's no difference.
It's not a price difference, because it's a gambling machine. It's any machine that takes money.
Right.
Pool tables, jukeboxes, everything has to be listed.
No, you're not right, Jeannie.
Oh, yeah.
There is an additional cost for gaming machines.
In addition to this.
Versus pool tables.
In addition to this permit.
Jukebox.
Right, exactly.
Right. There is, yeah.
That's a separate.
A hundred dollars versus.
That's a separate ordinance.
Versus twenty dollars.
That's a separate ordinance, right.
So I don't know the answer to your question there, Paul, but, yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, did we get a motion? Yeah, we did. We're, we're in discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We have a license report number 1232. This is a list of operators since our last meeting that have applied for the bartender's license. We'd need a motion to approve. Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that license report number 1233 be accepted. All in favor, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next we have the Augie Austin Jim Roof. Aaron?
Yeah, and Mayor, do you mind pulling the screen behind you down, please?
I can't jump that anymore. I don't know that I ever could.
All right. Well, we're waiting for this projector to turn on here. I just want to give you guys a little bit of background of how we got to this point. Staff in the last year has identified two things of major concern in our department. One is our Augie Austin Jim floor, and the other is our Augie Austin Jim roof. Our Augie Austin Jim floor does have bubbling problems. We had to close it, if you guys remember, over a month last year, between, starting in July and through August. When we were talking about replacing the floor, an obvious thing that came up was, can we protect that floor? And it got us looking a little harder at the roof. There was an instance last year, last year in March, where we had baseball tryouts. I think we had about 150 to 200 kids in the gym, and we had five buckets spread across the floor catching leaks. Obviously, not how we want to represent ourselves, and that really got us looking at things. To give you a little background on this roof system, we've had two companies come and look at it. One was commercial roofing out of Plover, the other was culps roofing out of Stratford. Both of them, when they first looked at the roof, basically were kind of amazed at what they saw. Were not familiar with this type of roof, and this type of roof is a barreled roof, as you can see, that goes down into valley areas, which you'll see in a slide coming up. And that's where the drains are, in those valley areas. So basically, what it is, is it's an asphalt roof, and what you're looking at here is a foil that was placed over the asphalt roof to reflect sun and heat, to limit damage of that roof. You can see some black spots on the top of the barreled roof here, and that is where the foil has curled up and is now exposing that asphalt. What these roofers have said is, they said, when that foil starts curling up, you can basically look at it like shingles on your house, or anyone's house. When the roof starts, or the shingles start getting bad, it'll curl up, and that's when it's basically time for a new roof. The major problems on this roof are in our valley areas, however, which is where we're getting almost all of our leaking on the sidelines of the main court in the Augie Austin Gym. Let me just switch slides here. Just another look at, a different angle here. And you can start to see the valley areas and where this water drains to. Now, these valley areas hold the most water for the longest period of time. And obviously, the water runs off that, that barreled area pretty fast, doesn't sit very often, and that's why we think we don't have the leaking areas in those, or the leaking problems in those areas. However, there are a lot of places where that foil has deteriorated, curled up, and it's going through the asphalt roof into the insulation through to our gym floor in those valley areas. The main concern with this is they took some core samples out of here, both companies did, and they found that the insulation was wet in multiple spots along both valleys. The concern with this is that, that moisture, that insulation holds that moisture, which can cause a decay of some of the support beams that are running through there, as well as the tectum board on the bottom. This roof is, basically, you can look at it, it comprises of layers. So if you're looking up from the, inside the gym, it's a tectum board, and then it goes to insulation. There's another board that the asphalt's laid over, and then it is this, this foil that you see. They said if you, if you sat here, didn't do anything about it, the major concern would be that it would eat away at those, at those support beams, and we're looking at possibly having a roof that's no longer up and on the floor. Obviously, want to avoid that. Now, is that going to be a year, or is it going to be 20 years? I don't think anyone can say. Now, the first question I asked, and I've been working with the school district on this, is how long ago was this roof redone? A lot of, I know, I talked to Glenn Flatoff, who's the facilities maintenance superintendent over there. He hasn't been around long. He couldn't give me an answer. We went back to bookkeeping at the school district. They didn't have POs. Basically, there's not a record of this being done that we have found yet in working with the school district. Today, I spoke with Carl Hayek, who, they're going through a complete evaluation of all the roofs at the school district. Reached out to him for some advice and to see if he had any knowledge of this. And then I also reached out to a contact he gave me, which he is working with on the school district on all their roofs. I explained the situation. I explained the roof. It was the first time I got an idea of when this might have been done. He said, these roof systems, he was familiar with. He's been in roofing for 35 years. He said, they're vintage 19, late 1970 roofs. Now, I can't tell you if it was 1970, 1982, or whatever. I'm not sure. But that gives you kind of a timeframe and an idea of how, how old this is. So, you know, you're looking at 30-plus-year-old roof. In our proposals, from commercial roofing and from culps out of Stratford, they basically both proposed a tear-out of the, the valley areas, which would be stripping it down to the tectum board that I explained, that you would be looking up at from inside the gym, replacing everything above that, which would be replacing the wet insulation, the board that goes over the top of that, and forgive me, I cannot remember what they call that. Basically, it looks like a drywall. And then they would, over that, would put their white rubber roofing, which I will pass around here. And what's coming around is just a, just a sample of, basically, what would be stretched across the entire roof that you're looking at. That white rubber roof is on the remainder of the rec center, which was all redone. Every roof was redone in the renovation in 2005. This is the only portion that was not redone at that time. The white, obviously, rubber roof is basically what almost all of these commercial roofs are going to, and the white is to. and the white is to reflect that sun and that heat. We got an estimate of right around the same for both, although Culp's Roofing did not include the tear-out of the two valley areas. Both, Commercial did, and Commercial came in at sixty-seven thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars. Now, we got a quote last year, it was about sixty-five thousand, so we feel pretty comfortable that that's the area that we're gonna be spending if we decide to go forward with this. The one concern I had is I'm not a roofing expert by any means, and how do we write a spec for this and make it fair? And make it the most biddable spec that we can? We looked at a couple of different options, and the two options that I have, I guess, is, one is going to a manufacturer like Carlisle, which basically sells this product that you just had in your hands. And they deal with a number of different companies with, that have their product. So that would leave it open to them, and basically, what would happen is, they bid out their product and then have an equal comparable material, so someone could bid it if they did not have a Carlisle product. They do that for free, there's no charge for them doing that. And then after talking to Carl Hayek at the school district today, he has had a roofing guy that he's worked with for years. He said probably ten to fifteen years at other school districts that he's been at. He said he would not work with anyone else, and what this person does is he's an outside consultant, commercial consulting is what the business is called. And what they do is they write the spec for a fee. Where you save the money, I spoke with him today, his name is Greg. Where you save the money is, is that they bid out the labor and the material as two separate packages. That forces the company to buy the material directly from, directly from the manufacturer, and it does not allow them to take whatever they have in their yard, which basically saves you typically fifteen percent on material costs going right from the manufacturer. So there can be no markup on that. I did talk with him, assuming this does go through. We did set a tentative date for Tuesday where he would come and look at it. I guess what would help us decide on which way to go with that is, he could give me an estimate with his fee and what we would be saving, and then I'd get, you know, we already have our estimates with having the free spec writing. So whatever we felt was lower, he felt very confident, and so did Carl. Carl spoke his praises, that he said he saved, Carl claimed he saved millions of dollars over school roofs in the last X amount of years by going with this, this company. So I guess we'd get an estimate for both, and that's how we would determine how we would proceed with this. You know, I guess I, as far as the timetable goes, I would like to get this done as soon as possible. We are in our off-season now as far as gym space goes. We are jam-packed from September until April, and the community, I mean, basically, till ten o'clock at night in those time periods during the week. And it's tough to find gym space in the community. There's a lot of gyms, I realize, between the high school, middle school, WLC, our facility, but I work with a lot of groups that scramble to find gym space. And I think if we had to close a gym during those time periods for construction, that would put a lot of groups in a big bind. So, I guess with that, does anyone have any questions on the state of this roof or anything that I'm proposing?
Aaron, could you tell them about just a short version of connecting the valley areas up halfway up or something like that?
Yes, thank you, Dave. Let's see if we can get a better picture here, too. Okay, there's another picture. So, another proposal, and what we asked for, obviously, we want options, okay? So, we asked for a cheaper option, around seventy thousand dollars, and that option turned out being just replacing the valley areas and putting a rubber roof over them, and then tying that rubber into the side. You can kind of see a crease, a different coloration there in that picture. That's about where we would tie that rubber roof into that foil. We asked about that, they said, yeah, absolutely, it would be cheaper. Neither companies felt comfortable doing that. It's something they haven't done, they haven't tied it into a different material. And as you can see, there's a ton of black spots above that line where water could get underneath, run down that barrel, and it's underneath the rubber that we just put in anyway. They said they couldn't guarantee any warranties with that system. So that's, that's why, you know, they basically said, we don't feel comfortable doing that work. That was about the only thing, short of patching it year in and year out, which we've done, and we still have leaks. So, thanks, Dave.
Good. Any questions, comments for Aaron? So you heard his request. What he's looking for is approval from council, right, at this time, to at least go off for bid on this project.
Right.
Where we get the money from is, is another question, obviously. This is not a budgeted item. So, Brennan, did you have something you wanted? Sorry.
I guess I was just gonna ask, Aaron, from the two companies that have looked at this, have they given you approximate timeline for warranty on this?
Yeah, ten years. And you'd pay extra for anything over that. I think in the packet, it shows Culp's has an additional five years for twelve hundred dollars in their quote. So that'd be a fifteen-year warranty.
So, here's the scenario, as I see it. If we approve Aaron, allowing Aaron to go forward with this and get some appraisals, we are not only approving that, but we are approving... Although you're gonna get a chance to say yes or no on the spending, but you have to have that idea that we're gonna have to spend the money, you know, and we're gonna have to get the money somewhere. The worst-case scenario is, is that, well, I mean, the obvious scenario is that we just take it out of reserves. If there's other places that we can find savings through the budget that we have, then we would, we would look at those. You know, we are also going to be talking about capital plan for two thousand and fifteen. I suppose there's a scenario, too, where we could pay for it out of reserves, and then if we do decide to borrow money for capital improvements for two thousand and fifteen, then the reserve fund could be reimbursed next year for that. So, I mean, that's a possibility, too. So, there are a few possibilities, obviously, to do this. You didn't say much about this tonight, Aaron, but this roof is not only affecting, and you said that, you did say about the buckets, but we do have some flooring issues, too, in the Augie Austin. And obviously, fixing the roof is the first place to start, but we're not done in that gym yet.
Correct.
And either.
Right.
And there'll, so there'll be another project on the gym floor that will be coming forward at a future date, too.
Right. And obviously, thanks, Mayor, for bringing that up. We have been talking about both these issues for about a year between staff, and I've talked with Jean about where this money may come from. She feels this year comfortable that we could do one of the two projects out of reserves, and then possibly, if we're looking at a capital plan, borrowing against, I guess, for that, to replenish the reserves to that amount. You know, the quote we got for the floor, just to let you guys know, is about a hundred eighteen thousand dollars. This is seventy, this is the one I would rather take care of first. Obviously, we don't want to put a new floor in before we take care of this. So, that's a little bit on that. If you have any questions about the finances, Jean might be the better person to talk to.
Well, and we can have that discussion tonight if you would like to. Again, I, I think the, what we're looking for tonight, or what Aaron's looking for tonight, is that you give him approval so that he can get, get a bid out there for us. And then he'll have to bring that, those bids back, obviously, for councils to approve or deny at that time. It's really not costing us anything yet.
Right.
Aaron, where would the money come from this consultant?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
That's gonna cost something, too, right there, isn't it?
Right, and that's, and that's kind of, maybe I didn't explain it very well, but when he comes on Tuesday to look at the roof, I've already given him the dimensions of the roof. He knows what we're looking at as far as material. He's gonna have all the numbers on Tuesday with him, gonna assess it for himself, and then if, with his cost, and then with his, you know, then he'll have an estimate of what they can get this done for. If that comes in lower than the estimates that I've gotten, that would be, that would be something that I would want to go towards. So, the savings that he could provide us, that would all be under what you're seeing in front of you.
So what you're saying, to answer your question, Dave, I think is, is that he's coming Tuesday, but he's not charging for coming Tuesday.
Right, sorry. That's free.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And that would be a contract. So contracts have to be approved by, and it's a monetary contract, too, by that means. So, before we could hire this individual, council would have to give approval on that, too. Again, we would have to find out where we would get that money from before we approve that.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yeah, I think we're, we are looking for a motion.
Okay, I wouldn't, you worded it very well when you said it, just a little bit ago. I'd like to move that we authorize Aaron to start getting the bids. And what?
An RFP or whatever it is, or request for bid, is that what you're asking for?
Sure.
Okay.
RFP, Request for Proposal.
Proposal.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fensky, second by Lockwood, that we approve of Aaron going out for proposals on the improvement or to redo the Augie Austin Jim Roof. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call a roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fensky.
Aye.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay, we have, we had a public hearing earlier for ordinance number zero four one for, this is an ordinance amending chapter fourteen of the City of Opaque building code. Brennan, just for the people that maybe didn't hear the public hearing, if you could just explain again why we're making changes.
Yep, this is just a follow-up action, it's more of an administrative cleanup of our existing ordinances. The state needs to have two different building codes that they implemented several years ago. They went to the International Building Code, or the IBC. Earlier this year, they enacted an ordinance regarding specifically municipalities or communities that have fire districts in their downtown. They wanted to align the fire district requirements with the IBC code. Some municipalities have enforced stricter fire district requirements, which would be allowed, but it would have to receive and be granted a waiver. Currently, the city does not have stricter requirements, and when reviewed in chapter fourteen, we identified that there are some administrative changes that we needed to correct to align ourselves with the proper building codes that are out there to date. So those are the changes that are in front of you this evening for consideration. I do want to just mention that this is just strictly for the fire district that is in the downtown. We do have a district map that I don't believe was in the packet, but, you know, again, mainly consists of buildings that have a zero lot line, specifically our downtown. It does, our district does encompass the foundry and some of the industrial development that is further east of that, down Auburn site, right near the Public Works. If in the future that the city wanted to enact stricter fire requirements, we could. So this is not prohibiting us from doing that, because it would be separate from that. This is strictly, again, just for the fire district in the main downtown area.
Okay, this is the first reading of that ordinance, and we will be bringing that up at our next official city council meeting. So if anybody has any comments on that, feel free to let Brennan know about that or bring him back to the next council meeting. Okay, let's move on, then. We have, thank you, Brennan.
No problem.
Next, we have the city insurance renewal for July first, two thousand and fourteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. I know Henry and Tina have been working hard on this over the last week here, so I'll turn it over to Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the two-pager that was distributed today, this evening. Every couple of years, we go out to market on our insurances, everything other than our airport-related insurances, because we've got a specialty carrier for that. I want to say that I think this process worked very well. We initially had eight brokers identified, they got bid packets. And if you go to the second sheet, we ended up getting four quotes, if you will. And the arrows relate to the two firms that, or two brokers, that brought quotes that were the most cost-competitive. And then we reached out to them again and said, okay, we had some questions. And then we said, okay, throw us your last best price. And we gave them a day to review their quotes, and they shot us updated quotes. And in both cases, they were redone from the first. Now, the second page is really tiny, and there's a lot of information on there, but there's coverage information for you if you want that detail. But I'd like to focus on the cover sheet. And just kind of review the sheet. The first column is what we're currently paying for our insurances, and EMC is our current carrier. And you can see that our premium for this year is a hundred and sixty-five, about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. But what EMC offers is what they call a dividend on their workers' comp policy. And it's a flat dividend. So, basically, a dividend is sort of, they give it back to you because you've paid more than your premium would suggest, and they look at your performance and your claims history. But they guarantee that twenty-five percent dividend. So if you apply that all the way down in the bottom, our net insurance costs were about a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Then you have your two quotes. EMC's quote, and again, they offered up to twenty-five percent flat dividend. Their quote was about a hundred and seventy thousand for the insurances. If you apply the dividend, it's nearly twenty. They're down to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, this was getting so competitive that at about four o'clock this afternoon, I get an email, and the broker talked to his boss, and they're willing to discount, take less on their commission, because they saw the numbers, they weren't, they weren't low, the lowest. So they offered up the four thousand dollars. So just keep in mind that, so now their amended proposals is about a hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred. Now, here's where it gets real interesting, because if you look at their base quotes, LWMMI is the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance. So twenty years ago, well, not quite twenty, fifteen years ago, the League of Municipalities created their own insurance company. It's a not-for-profit, it only ensures municipalities and villages. The governing board are made up of municipal representatives, and they have consultants and insurance professionals that they utilize. And they have an insurance company, and they've got nearly four hundred municipal policyholders. So just on the quotes, on the premiums, they're about eleven thousand less. But here's the kicker. If you apply the dividend, which EMC is a flat dividend, and you could see the effect of that, the league runs it like, we don't guarantee that, because we've got to look at your claims history. But in our bid specs, we did ask for a five-year dividend history, and over that five year, it's ten percent. But this last year, it was fifteen percent. Over five years, it was ten percent. The very last year, the dividend was fifteen percent. This is sort of a moving target, and it's hard for me to evaluate it, so we decided to just take the ten-year or five-year average. to just take the ten-year or five-year average, and that's ten percent. So if you do all that, the league's quote, and it's ten percent on all lines that they insure. Now, they go outside for their property to another carrier called, it's called Chubb, I think, excuse me. So if you apply ten percent, it's not just against workers' comp, which last year, they paid thirty percent on workers' comp dividend, but they paid less of a percentage on their other lines. But overall, it was fifteen percent. Okay. So you can essentially see there's a difference of about fifteen hun, am I doing my math right? About, about, uh, about fifteen, sixteen hundred. Um, EMC is cheaper just on the premiums and then the, the dividend. But I think, and, and I, and I know you want to make a decision maybe based on pure numbers, and, and this is as close as we're going to get to a good apples-to-apples comparison. But all you got to do is if you calculated a twelve percent dividend, and they were at fifteen last year, their overall cost is going to be less than EMC. So, you know, while EMC can guarantee it, the league, um, you know, we, that's sort of a moving target. And for me, I couldn't quantify what it means that the insurance company is basically built around municipalities, and their coverages are a bit better. Um, so I don't know that you want to totally base this on price. If you look at what our net cost is this year, I, I'm recommending we go with the league. Um, we, uh, you know, we're, our insurances are going to be up about fifteen hundred dollars from last year. Now, at one level, I think it's good what EMC did. They threw me a number at the last, the ninth hour or twenty-third hour, whatever you want to say. I don't know, that kind of rubbed me the wrong way a little bit personally, but they're really aggressive, they want our business, so I get that. But, you know.
Henry, I know you're not a, um, insurance expert here, but a couple of things that stick out to me is, and I don't, I don't think we have an insurance agent on our group here, but I don't fully understand the umbrella, but, uh, you know, EMC is charging about sixty-four hundred dollars for the umbrella, and, uh, the league just has it as NA. So I'm not sure, do we have an umbrella program with the league? That's one of my questions. And then the other one that really sticks out to me is the auto liability. I mean, we're looking at al- almost twenty-two thousand dollars under EMC, and it was twenty-one thousand for this current year, and the auto, I guess if you add the auto liability and the physical damage together, it's around ten thousand dollars. But that's still eleven thousand dollars cheaper. So are we getting the same coverage for that?
Let me speak to the umbrella, because this was something we had a lot of discussion on. What that does is, in the, in the league's program, they have, and this is on liability, so it's general liability, public officials, police professional, um, that it's five million per occurrence. What EMC's is, is two million per occurrence with a three million on top of it. So essentially, that's five million. Now, I asked the league if they've ever had a five million dollar liability claim, and they were pretty close in a couple cities. So the chances of that happening, uh, are very minimal, but in, in talking with, uh, some references and stuff, the league's configuration's better. It's unlimited. We could, you know, not that it would ever happen, but conceivably, you could have five, you know, claims. And what the umbrella is, is the aggregate means they're going to pay out no more than three million in a year. So, you know, I'm not an insurance professional, so, you know, we worked through this. I did call some references for both to understand. I can tell you EMC has been really good to work with on claims, never an issue. And that's worth something because it's sort of bird in bush, worth two, you know, in the hand, or bird in the hand worth two in a bush. So we know them, and they're good, they're a good company. Um, but the league, um, you know, they're run for us, and they lose customers every now and then. They do, they, they get people migrate to other policies. I guess people go through the same procedure. Um, so, I mean, it's really a horse apiece because I could have easily, and I wanted to be forthright with you, I took all five-year average, but the last two years, their average is more like thirteen and a half, fourteen percent.
But let's go back to the automobile, but, um, so I guess if I look at the second page here, it helps me understand that they have a combined single limit of five million versus EMC's two million, but, uh, under the uninsured motorist and the underinsured motorist, um, EMC is at three hundred thousand dollars, where, and I'm assuming that's per occurrence, and the, and the league is only at twenty-five thousand dollars per occurrence. And then fifty for the underinsured, yeah. Medical payments stay the same. So there is, there is no real comparison, I mean, it's hard to compare there that...
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what makes the insurance policy that much less? And if that's the case, what makes me nervous is, is that there must be a lot of people that have claims where they're uninsured and underinsured, if there's a difference between twenty-one thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars. And, I mean, I'd hate to see us short on that.
And again, I think some of this is qualitative. I mean, they're nonprofits, so they don't have to, you know, they've got to make sure that they get their coverage and they set claim or set premiums adequately, but they don't have a profit that they've got to build into this. So it just seems to me, right off the top, that it's more affordable. But, um, you know, coverages matter. Um, I, you know, you talk to the different brokers, and they pick apart the other, you know, the other person's proposal. Uh, you know, a little bit of me says, you know, it'd be nice to maybe kick the tires and try a different, uh, insurer. Uh, they are us, and, you know, the dollar amount is different. It's about, uh, maybe about eighteen hundred dollars. But this four thousand at the last minute was thrown at me, and I came back, I'm reporting it because I want to be open about it, but it, you know, the league hasn't gotten a chance to come back a second time either and throw another number. So I, I don't know, you know, these are for renewal in July. I don't know if you, Mayor, I mean, um, you know, if the council felt comfortable, I could go back if they would give some contingent authority or something, because I, I just didn't have time to go back to the league and have them tweak their policy, you know, their numbers. And they may say no. But I could easily argue that that div- dividend could be shown higher than ten percent, which, like I say, if I put twelve percent in there, their overall premium cost is going to be, the net cost is going to be cheaper. You know, unfortunate, I'll make one last comment. Unfortunately, when we had this downturn, and we had been doing it a, for a few years before, we basically budgeted the net insurance expense. So we already take into account that dividend, and that's probably, you know, that's the reality of it. We were turning over every stone to save money. But if you just look at the pure premiums, they're cheaper. And I talked to a couple of references, and they, they said, we understand, you do what you have to do to make your budgets work, but we never budget that dividend, because that's more like icing on the cake when it comes in. They budget the premium. And if you just look at the premiums, the league is, is much better. So now, the decision on the money part hinges on this dividend, and then how much value do, do we place on that? And it's important in our budget.
You know, when we get these things, the same night that we have to vote on them, but again, now I'm, I'm, as I'm looking at the second page, and you guys pipe in if you want to here, I mean, but...
I'd like to pipe in.
Yeah, let me, let me finish my comment, then I'll let you pipe in.
You're invited.
Sorry. Um, I just, looking at EMC, if you look at, under general liability, you know, this is the same company, and they're making a bid for, a new bid, and, and, uh, if you look like under general liability, they went from fire damage of three million dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. You know, and there was a couple more examples where they lowered their, their max. Oh, yeah, right below that, commercial automotive. They went from three million for uninsured motorists down to three hundred thousand, even though that's more than, uh, than the league is, it's, it's still quite a bit less than what, uh, they were the year before. So, again, I, I, you know, those are, those are some certain things that I saw there. Paul, go ahead.
I was just going to point out that the league is for their underinsured and uninsured motorists was twenty-five and fifty, whereas EMC, even though they've gone down, is three hundred thousand. And that's kind of a big deal because we have a lot of, a lot of, uh, liability with all of our vehicles going around all the time.
Fifty thousand isn't going to cover a snowplow truck, you know?
That's correct. So, I mean, that, that in itself, you know, I, I wonder if they reduced their coverages for their bid this year to get the price down, if that's, was kind of what, you know, one of the tricks they used.
Well, and that, if, if they saw the other bid too, which it sounds like they did...
Well, that's, that's the one thing I, we did, is once we got the tab, we sent it all out, uh, the four that submitted, and, um, we asked for comments. Did we ref- reflected accurately? Um, in the league's case, we didn't, we double counted a number. So we corrected that, and then we took the two lowest and had them, uh, talk with us to go over their, their proposal. And then I said, okay, shoot us one last number. And they did that. And then EMC, at, like I said, at just an hour, hour and a half before the meeting, shot this four, additional four thousand dollar reduction. Now, something to be said for them really wanting our business. Um, but I don't know that it was fair to the league, because the league, I'm sure, could figure out a way to get their bid down twelve hundred dollars to get it less, if that's what your overall decision's going to be based on, on the money.
But, Henry, I appreciate where you're coming from, but this is two people that have now said this, and, and you've kind of ignored it, but we're all concerned about uninsured motorists being twenty-five grand under the league, and it's three hundred thousand under EMC. So if the league brings it up to three hundred thousand dollars, how much more is it going to cost us to get it to the three hundred thousand if we believe that that's what we have? And, you know, I, so, I still have my concerns about the umbrella, to tell you the truth, although you did explain it, uh, to a certain extent. Um, but, uh, I, I, I still have some concerns there, but the auto one is, is the one that really makes me the most nervous.
Yeah, that's inadequate for league, for their insurance.
Do we have somebody that can tell us, like, where, based on our city, what kind of coverage we need for each section? I mean, it's kind of hard for us, not being in insurance, to know what numbers we really need, but, I mean, that's where I would think that the league could trust them a little bit, because that's what they know, but maybe that's not the case. Is there some, a way that we can find out what the act, what kind of coverage we actually need? There's no point in paying more for coverage that is unnecessary either.
Right, and I agree with you too, Gillian, until the point where the league starts to get into competition. You know, once they get into competition, then, you know, all bets are off. I mean, they're, they're trying to gain our bid just as much as anybody else is. But I do agree with you. I think that there's got to be somebody out there that's a professional that can help us, and maybe we got to pay them something to come in here and, and do some comparisons for us, make sure that we're doing, picking the right one here. I mean, I'm all for saving money, but we get our first accident, and it's a...
Underinsured, yeah, we're up.
Yeah.
Without a paddle on.
And, and maybe John Hurt knows more than we do on this.
I don't know much more. Henry, you might ask the mutual if that discount is based on our experience or everybody's experience, because I think it is. If other cities have big claims, it affects your discount. The flat rate that you get from EMC is just your deal. It doesn't have anything to do with anybody else affecting your rate. That's how most of those mutuals work. Maybe not, but I think that's the case, is they have a pool, and the total experience is where your dividend comes from. Everybody gets the same dividend, but it's not your experience, it's everybody's. It affects that discount. That's why it goes from ten to fifteen to whatever, and it's an average. It's the average of everybody's experience in the pool. EMC is not, that, isn't factored that way.
Yeah, we did, we did clarify that, because the dividend was what was sort of the, the linchpin in terms of dollars.
And that's why I say you really don't know what that's going to be, but you can really, if they're going to give you a twenty-five percent flat rate, it's pretty predictive as to what that's going to be, and you're going to know for budgetary purposes.
Well, they do, the league, the mutual, fifty percent of your dividend's based on your own experience, and the other fifty percent is the pool.
Okay.
Yep.
Paul, you were... Yeah, the other worrisome thing about EMC is that the fire damage limit for any one fire is a hundred thousand dollars, down from three million. Um, and the odds, if you're going to have a fire, a lot of times, you're looking at more than a hundred thousand versus league of municipalities, which is five million.
But those, those are minimums, and the umbrella brings it back to that five million, because that's what the umbrella's for. You carry the minimum, and that's what you get, but when it goes over that, your umbrella covers that excess up to five billion.
Oh, okay.
That's why the other ones, those umbrellas cover fire, they cover liability, they cover all that stuff, and you get the bump on the umbrella.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that's a liability issue anyway. Down below, the property damage, I think, is covered, um, the property boiler and machinery, and that's seventy-six million or seventy-five million. I believe that's what, I think that would, if fire damage under buildings, I would guess that that's, falls in that category. I'd like to also mention something about going back up to liability. Uh, it doesn't seem like the league policy has any aggregate limits. Um, they have occurrence limits, but, uh, with EMC, you have an occurrence limit of two million, general aggregate two million, so you can have one occurrence, and you're done for the year. Um, and then product completed operations aggregate is four million. The league doesn't have any aggregate limits, so you can have, even though the, the five million dollar each occurrence, when you include the umbrella for EMC, uh, are, are equal, uh, I don't see any aggregate limits at all, and, um, that makes me a little uncomfortable. Paul pointed out the fire damage limit of a hundred thousand, uh, versus the league is five million. Um, you know, even though it, I, I'm guessing that a building fire would come under property boiler machinery, and damage, uh, would be covered under that number, I, I would like to make sure that it is.
And Henry, one other thing is, in my experience, and I don't deal with the agents that much, but it, over the last period that we've had EMC, we have really gotten good service from them.
Oh, I know, and I...
Their agents have been all over it, and, and we've never had a problem where they give you any golf ball coverage or anything else, so that's something to be taken into account. We have no experience with the other one, so I, I don't know.
We have league of municipalities in the past, though?
Yeah, we did, when, um, when they first got going, they were affiliated with Wausau, and I think we had them for a couple of years. And then, uh, did Liberty buy Wausau, maybe?
Yes.
And then that whole relationship between the league... And then that whole relationship between the league and Liberty went down south, and that's, then they went their own way. But no, I cannot say anything bad about the, the claims.
How much do we self-insure? And what are our deductibles?
I think we self-insure.
Huh?
What is it?
Well, you got a deductible under.
Five hundred, it's a five hundred on the vehicle, anyway.
Public officials, you got.
Thousand.
Three thousand. None under the league, though. I mean, there's a few, you can see them.
I guess the, the point I would make is that, are we sure that we have the right kind of coverages? I mean, how long ago did we explore each of these items and determine whether we should have a higher deductible or not, or no deductible?
Well, it's.
And should we be considering hiring a professional to give us some advice on that, as well as doing the comparison?
Well, going under, yeah, thanks, Al. Paul, I mean, as you read further now, I, you know, you go down to property boiler and machinery, ordinance or law, you know, the league, which, you know, that's who they insure. You know, it's all under that, it's included in that seventy-six million, where you only have a max from the EMC of two hundred and fifty thousand, which is down from five hundred thousand from the year before. We know that people can always question our laws or ordinances, so. Are we going to be underinsured there, too, with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar max? Again, all to the point that we don't know, you know.
The biggest thing with me is, Mayor, which you pointed out, is the uninsured and underinsured motorist. And I would, I would be curious as to how much the premium would go up for the league if they increased those limits to three hundred thousand dollars each to match EMC.
Well, do we then have EMC match the, the limits on these others, that the mayor's pointed out as well? I'm not sure how we.
Sure.
You know, because that'll affect what they're doing.
So I guess this is the way I see it happening, is is that we just have Henry go back and talk to both EMC and, and League of Municipalities, and find out if we can get closer to, to a better comparison, apple to apple. It doesn't really tell us whether we're underinsured or overinsured, though, but it does get something done. And then we would have to have a special meeting before July first, obviously, because the plan, I don't know if you have a grace period or not, but, but I would think you'd want to have something in place by July first. The other, as I see it, the other option is, is we ask EMC to extend it for thirty days. Go out and find out if there is an expert that we can hire to help us analyze our insurance. And hopefully, he can get it done in less than thirty days, and, or if we extend it for sixty days, or whatever the case might be. It's probably going to cost us at a premium, I would guess, to do that, but.
There goes your savings then.
Yeah.
So it's, well, it's true.
At some level, I think that's the role that brokers are supposed to do. And if, if we're going to delay any decision, I'll bring the both brokers in and let them get your business.
Well.
I mean, I can't, they can.
The problem that we have, though, Henry, is, is that, yeah, you have two brokers competing against each other, but as a number of people said in here, the lowest isn't always the best here. We, you know, now that we start talking about it, we want to make sure that the, that we have, obviously, we want a good price, but we want to make sure that we're not, we have too much coverage or we have too little coverage. And maybe I'm overanalyzing this, but, but I, I don't think so.
Well, I think a broker has an ethical standard they've got to live by, too. And if they're not honest with you, that's not good.
Well, we hire, we hire an outside person to help us find the best health insurance, because it's complicated. Okay? So, there's got to be people out there that do that.
She's a broker, the M3 is our broker for health insurance.
For health insurance.
And their job is.
And that's a third party, though. That's somebody that, she gets the same amount of money, no matter who you go with. I mean, with the short notice we have here, to tell you the truth, our best option is probably to have Henry go back and talk to EMC and the league, and try and get a little bit better understanding of the, of the automobile part of this. And, and what was the other one, too, Paul?
Aggregate.
The aggregate?
Fire.
The fire, and find out what that's all about. And even maybe the ordinance or law for EMC, because it's included in the one for, for the league. And then, like I said, if we want to get this done by July first, we're probably talking a, a special meeting next week. Yeah. Probably next Tuesday, huh? Anybody not available next Tuesday?
I may be gone.
I haven't even looked at my calendar yet, but, okay, thanks.
Possibly, we might leave on Wednesday instead.
But I don't know, does anybody feel comfortable? If you want to make a motion, you certainly can, and I'm not trying to stop you from doing that, and you have every right to do that. If you feel comfortable with it the way it is, we can certainly do that. If not, I think we should plan on a, a special meeting next Tuesday to talk about this. Henry, if you want to bring, get the answers to our questions, and then also bring in an individual from each one of them.
I'd happy, I'd rather them explain their coverages and what we need.
You know, it may very well be that the auto for the league is, if it's over that, it's covered by umbrella or some other thing, but we don't know that.
No, they don't. So, yeah. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Next Tuesday, six o'clock, that's what we're used to, six o'clock? Right? Obviously, Sandy will get an agenda out to you. And if you do get answers, Henry, try and get them out to us as soon as possible, so we can take a look at them. Okay, so there's no, nothing to vote on, on this issue tonight. We'll just put that off till next Tuesday. Next, we have a request from the triathlon for street closures, and this is on Friday, August fifteenth, for the kids' triathlon, and then also for Saturday, August sixteenth. This is on page two ninety-two of your packet. Henry, you're obviously a part of the triathlon, no changes?
Nope, same route, sir. Same route.
Oof, approved.
Different date.
Second.
Whoa, whoa. Motion by Olson, second by Lockwood, that we approve of the street closures for the triathlon on August fifteenth and August sixteenth of this year. Any discussion?
Chief, you're okay with this?
Yep. Okay. All right, I was trying to read your expression, I wasn't sure.
He's numb from the insurance talk.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Let's go down to communications, recommendations of the mayor. I'm not sure, Henry Brennan or Aaron, do you want to just touch on the July second? I know we got invitations out and stuff like that, but let's just talk a little bit about that.
Sure, and Henry or Brennan can chime in whenever. But July second, as you guys know, is the donor party. We'll be having a little ceremony, starting at four o'clock on that day. Afterwards, we'll follow with, we've got some food, burgers, brats, hot dogs, potato salad, coleslaw, things like that ordered. So, it'll be a little ribbon cutting, there'll be a tree planted. The first of ten trees for the donors will be planted on that day, and then we'll, we'll eat. So that's what I have to say. It'd be great if you guys could show up.
Yeah, it would be wonderful if we could get a good attendance there, if you can, obviously, it's.
During the day, it's kind of tough for those of us who work. And we'll start at, like, five o'clock for grilling and eating and things like that.
No, actually, it's three.
Three, ooh.
Dinner at four.
Yeah.
Paul, can you correct that? I mean, I do work also, it's just, I can decide my own hours.
I was just, I was just a little frustrated that this was, hey, I wanted to go, but I was frustrated it was happening when I was at work, so.
All right.
That was my reason for my, yeah.
Three o'clock, right.
I just RSVP'd.
Okay, anything else for the good of the meeting? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our regular scheduled, we're actually, we're going to have a special meeting next Tuesday, but our next regular scheduled meeting is Tuesday, July first, two thousand and fourteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, and it is seven thirty-nine PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.